We're going to start and then we'll just wait for her. Yep. Good morning and welcome. It is February 7, 2018. Welcome to the City Council Meeting. Let the record reflect that Vice Mayor Gary Wine is excused, but all other city officials are present. Please stand firstly for an invocation and then the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Heavenly Father, we pray, oh God, today and every day, we will use the abilities that you have given us in ways that benefit others and bring a measure of justice and mercy to what we do. We ask your forgiveness when we miss the mark, when we do not act as the people that you would have us be. May your precious Spirit so touch our lives and the lives of every person, so that good works will flow from our hands. Respect for others will be our standard and kindly words will be the indication of our love for you. We ask you, Lord, to bless us, keep us, to make us face shine upon us and be gracious unto us. Lift up your countenance upon us, give us peace both now and forevermore. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag. And to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with justice and justice for all.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
We have some very special presentations this morning, the first of which is a proclamation for St. Vincent de Paul Day, which Councilmember Matthews will present.
Thank you. It's my honor and privilege. This is a proclamation for the city of Punta Gorda, Florida, whereas the St. Vincent de Paul Society, initially called the Conference of Charity, originated in Paris, France, on April 23, 1833, with the first meeting of the society in the United States being held in St. Louis, Missouri, on November 20, 1845, and whereas the society has been a friend to the poor and needy for over 179 years, with core values including the dignity of the human person, preferential option for the poor, charity and justice, virtue of humility, both personal and corporate, virtue of charity, friendship, community and simplicity, and whereas St. Vincent de Paul provides food, clothing, home furnishings and financial assistance to individuals and families in need, and whereas, as a method of raising funds, the St. Vincent de Paul District Council of Charlotte County will hold its ninth annual Walk for the Poor on February 17, 2018, at the Lashley Park Pavilion in Punta Gorda, asking walkers to raise donations to help the four Charlotte County Conferences provide for the needs of qualified families and individuals, and whereas, over the past year, the conferences and their combined volunteer workforce of more than 500 have helped thousands of men, women and children in Charlotte County, who have received goods and financial aid totaling over $1.4 million. Now therefore, the City Council of the city of Punta Gorda, Florida, does hereby proclaim February 17, 2018, as St. Vincent de Paul Day, and encourages citizens to participate in the walk or devote their talents to volunteering with the society. Passed and duly adopted in regular session this 7th day of February 2018, City of Punta Gorda, Florida, Rachel Kiesling, Mayor, and Richard Collins will be accepting.
Thank you very much, and I welcome everyone to come out to the walk on February 17. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have our presentations, the first of which is the Florida Master Gardener Awards of Excellence for Florida Friendly Landscaping, which I will turn over to our very own Master Gardener Nancy Prasky.
Good morning. It's an honor to do this. I've been a master gardener since 2006, and I was in Florida, a master gardener in Colorado before that. So, I'm going to introduce to you Wendy Wilbur from the University of Florida. She's been with the university since 2000 and started out with the Latchell County and then moved into the state position. She grew up on a farm in Miami-Dade County, and in her 15 years in the Master Gardener Program, she's trained over 300 Master Gardener volunteers and is recognized as a leader in Florida's Master Gardener Program. So Wendy, congratulations, welcome to our City Council, and I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you so much. I'm so pleased to be here, and I'm very excited today to speak a little bit about the program called Parks That Teach. Charlotte County Master Gardener Volunteers operate that Parks That Teach Program as a public-private partnership between the city of Punta Gorda, the University of Florida IFAS Extension Charlotte County Master Gardener Program, and the Team Punta Gorda with the grant from the Charlotte Community Foundations. Parks That Teach is a part of the Punta Gorda Pathways Corridor. It's really quite an amazing program. Guided tours are led by Master Gardener Volunteers who walk participants along this special trail. Master Gardeners conducting these tours have had specialized training, and along the path, visitors view unique ecosystems, mangroves, native plants, native shrubs, and they learn how they are going to integrate these plants into their own landscapes and have a way to learn a little bit more about natural Florida to put in their own yard. And they also learn about invasive plants as well. As a result of this program, over 300 people have been trained, and they learn how to put the right plant in the right place. And it's an amazing team of folks, led by Holly Bates, Ralph Mitchell and Tom Becker, and it's an amazing team led by Donna Worthley, Dennis, Janet Laird, Bob Bechtold and Margie Kang, and of course Nancy, we recognize you as well for being such a strong proponent of the Master Gardener Program here in Punta Gorda. And it is my pleasure to award Ms. Donna Worthley the Award of Excellence for Florida Friendly Landscaping from the state of Florida, from our Master Gardener Program, and I'm so very proud to give this award to her.
Well Wendy stole some of my thunder, because she's already thanked a lot of the people that I need to thank. And I'm so sorry, Gentella Bowe's not here, because she's the person we worked with so closely and still do with the city. Over five years ago, this little idea came to fruition, a bunch of us sitting around and saying, well, you know, now that we've got the pathways, shouldn't we do something more with them? And so with that, Kate Preston, Bob Bechtold and I, the Master Gardeners, along with Gentella Bowe, Nancy Johnson, who's not here either, from Team Punta Gorda, but there are some other team got people here, and I'm not so sure who you are and where you are, but Bill Wood, Kathy Oberle and Nancy Morris. Thanks to Team Punta Gorda, who wrote the original grant that got us the money so that we could label the plants, so even if you don't walk along with us, every first Saturday of the month, or the third Wednesday of the month, every walk starts at 9:30, we leave from Fisherman's Village right there where the outdoor adult playground, fitness area, whatever you want to call it. So we invite all of you to come join us in another week here. We're going to be doing it coming up the next Wednesday. Thank you so much, everybody. Thanks to the city, thanks Howard, and Nancy, everybody else, Wendy, who am I pointing, who are we pointing to, Rachel?
Let's have a photo with you and Nancy and people here that are here.
Okay, all the Master Gardeners that are here, because there's a bunch of us here that all participate in the walk too, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Rachel.
I gotta give a go Gators on that one. Good job, Gators.
Ralph.
Ralph.
Ralph. Ralph. Thank you. Thank you all.
Next, we have a very special presentation that came together with a lot of people's help, and we don't give these out lightly. These are very hard to come by, and it's my honor to give the recognition for lifetime achievement to Dr. Mark Asperilla. We put together this beautiful art plaque that will be hung in the Virginia B. Andy's Clinic on your behalf, so let me read it, and then what I would like, whoever would like to speak to Mark, come up to the podium, and then after I present the plaque to him, we'll take a big photo up here. The city of Punta Gorda honors the lifetime achievement of Mark O. Asperilla. A man of vision, whose energy knows no bounds, and whose unbridled passion and dedication helped create communities here and across the globe, where each and every individual is cared for, valued and respected, and we honor you today.
Where do you start? Well, Mark, I'll start by saying you are my brother, just as sure as my brother Steve, Dr. Steve, you are my brother, and I love you so much. You make such a difference in my life, all the things I've done, half of it wouldn't have happened without you. But beyond that, this city, this county, this state, this country, this world would not be as good a place as it is without you. We've seen your effects around here, and I know it's not just about work. You're a great son, brother, father, husband, colleague, doctor, a righteous man, you did it all, and you looked after the world and you said, why not? Why not make it better? Why not have a free clinic in town that take care of everyone, because everyone deserves respect and medical care? Why not have a Vietnam Wall to honor those men and women who gave all in the Vietnam War and everything else that you've done? It would be impossible to name it all. Building houses and clinics in the Philippines after a typhoon, going to Haiti, a place of immeasurable darkness and hopelessness, and yet bringing the light of God and reaching into a pit and abyss and bringing people out one at a time and saving lives. I could stand here for three hours and wouldn't even come close, come close, to covering anything you've done in your life, but at the very end of the day, it's about the man you are and all the things you've done and achieved. And I know things have changed a little bit, but you're still you, and I still look to you for guidance. You're still a man who everybody needs for guidance. We're glad you're here today, and it's our honor to be here for you. This is surely your day, Mark. Thank you for everything you've ever done, and thank you for being my brother, my friend. I guess it's been over 10 years, personally, professionally. I think personally, I don't want to share the pants incident. However, you know, people look at our county, and we look at the roads, the buildings, the bridges, the hospitals, the libraries. Charlotte County isn't about bricks and mortar. It's about people. People caring about people. Mark, I've been around a while, I've known a lot of people. There is no one that I can think of in my life that has dedicated and given themselves more to their community than you have. I have been blessed to be able to call you a friend, whether you're in your boxes, your pajamas, your shorts, or we're out at a function or event, or having a meal, or at a commission meeting. I have been so blessed. We shared, we've prayed together, we've eaten together, we've partied together, we've worked together, we even did a little campaigning together. But my life and Charlotte County's life is so much better, because you've dedicated yourself to this community and each and every one of us. Mark, we love you. God bless you, and get strong, be well, and stay with us.
Dr. Asperilla, there are not enough words to say how much we love you. On behalf of Virginia B. Andy's Volunteer Community Clinic Board of Directors, our medical director, Dr. Klein, co-founder, as your brother, co-founder, our staff, our volunteers, and especially all of our patients, we love you very, very much, and this day is yours. Thank you.
Well, you've heard all the great achievements of Dr. Mark, my good friend, but there's one thing no one has mentioned yet. I've been a professional musician my entire life. I met Mark back in about 2009 at a 4th of July party at Steve's house, where I was playing the piano. I found out that Mark was also a piano player, and he came up to my piano and blew me away. Now, how does a man who spends 14, 15, 18 hours a day at the hospital, and then in his office, and then at the free clinic, my question to him was, when in the world do you get time to practice? I guess at 3 o'clock in the morning. But the thing that really impressed me the most about his musical talents was you could put a piece of music in front of him, and five minutes later, he has it memorized. And I said, that's not fair, no one should be able to do that. He has total recall. And my good friend, Mark, I just wanted to recognize the virtuoso musician that you are.
I'm Dick Carr, President of the Vietnam Hall of Southwest Florida. Mark and Dr. David Klein have been our strongest supporters to bring this wall to Punta Gorda. And it's hard to follow Dr. Klein's comments, it truly is, but Mark, far beyond being a supporter, you have been a friend to us, and mainly, an inspiration, and you continue to be an inspiration to all of us associated with the wall, and we thank you so much and we love you.
This beautiful plaque here on the floor, we would like to show it to you.
How are you? How you doing?
I'm doing.
Mark, try this. Try the mic here.
Yes, I want to say a few words.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes, they can.
I was in Upstate Albany, New York. I went to Albany Medical College, and the first thing I heard of Punta Gorda is a recruiter came in and my boss recommended me to come down here, and it's a very, it's not easy to convince me when you have an 18-inch snow up in Albany, and it's minus 20 degrees. So they gave me a good package, and they said they need my expertise badly here. I went to Catholic school all my life, so there was a spiritual component on my medical school, so I followed the Bible together with my medical books. And when I saw the needs for the political solution, it's not working, and yet more people are uninsured. A lot of my patients are deciding on medicine or healthcare, and I decided to do something about it. 2 o'clock in the morning, I drew up the plan. Somebody up there woke me up and said, Mark, you have to do something. You have to contribute your talent to help the people of Charlotte County. And the Virginia B. Andy's was born, and with the help of Tom Capello, my Jewish brother, Dr. Klein, yeah.
He's right behind you.
And we planned this thing together, and because of the epidemic, we also started the Hep C Clinic and the HIV Clinic. We worked together here and do what is necessary to help people that are underserved, underinsured. We wrote to our congressman, and we went to Wyandton, DC, but we didn't have much answer. We were able to get hold of the aid, and you know how it is in a big political, they give you a runaround and they show you the door outside. So I told them, even in small things, we could make a difference.
You folks should know, Mark has gotten dozens and dozens of awards and recognition, not only from the AMA, but also he's a recipient of the Ellis Island Award. And talking about this, I think this means more to Mark right here in Charlotte County than anything else, so he's saying thank you.
Thank you. Just to let you know, I'm an immigrant myself, one of President Trump's not favorite people.
Rumor has it, Mark, rumor has it, you were legal.
Thank you. Yes, yep, thank you. Thank you. It's your day. Enjoy it.
I have a Parks That Teach factoid if you want me to share. Parks That Teach fact, that would be interesting.
Nancy has a fun fact about Parks That Teach that she would like to share before we move on.
Yeah, one of the, you probably don't realize, but I was the CEO of Team Punta Gorda when the brainchild of Parks That Teach evolved, and so I appreciate all of the collaboration that it took to make that happen, and it's a perfect example. We were trying to figure out, how would we pay for these little monument signs that are supposed to be along the Harbor Walk? And the city staff came up with this ingenious idea of using the leftover concrete that was from the sewel panel pores, and so they made a form and poured all those over at Public Works and saved considerable dollars and enabled us to fit the cost of the program into the grant that we received from the Charlotte Community Foundation. So thanks to the ingenuity of the Public Works staff, and actually, it was also urban design that helped bring that to reality.
Task them with an interesting idea, you'll get several, I'm sure. Okay, next is introduction of border committee member nominees. If your name is in the running for a border committee and you would like to introduce yourself and give us a one-minute bio, we would really appreciate that. Please take this microphone, state your name, and which border committee you're in the running for.
Well, it's certainly going to be difficult to follow someone like Dr. Asperilla, but I think most of you know me. My name is Jim Lawson, and I have been asked by Dr. Harry Agabides to serve on the Housing Authority Board. I have served on other 501(c)(3)'s before. I would appreciate your support, and if chosen, I would be more than happy to serve.
Thank you.
Uh huh, thank you.
I'm John Tiller. I'm a nominee for the City Employees Pension Board. As a prior gentleman, I sure can't follow the doctor and some of the other things here, but I would be honored to serve. I have a background as an actuary, insurance, reinsurance, annuity consultant, and CEO of, present CEO of several companies, both domestically and internationally, served on boards, have been on or chaired asset management committees for a number of insurers. Included in that, of course, would be annuity products, which would fit right in with the pension board. I think the most notable accomplishments were as the principal in charge of all insurance consulting for KPMG, and chairman of the International Insurance Consulting Group for them, and CEO for General Electric Subsidiary in Life Reinsurance, with some $3 billion of revenue and other $3 billion of assets to manage and make sure our liabilities. Yet I'd be honored to serve and to ask you any questions, if so, ask them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to introduce themselves for a border committee position that they have applied for? Okay, seeing none, we will recess as the City Council and shortly reconvene as the Community Redevelopment Agency. Okay, we will call the CRA meeting to order. Let the record reflect that Vice Mayor Wine is excused. All other CRA members are present. The first item of business would be citizens' comments on CRA agenda items only, which would be the project status report for February 2018, the approval of the minutes, and that's it. Those two items. If you would like to speak on those two items, now would be the time. Take this podium over here, state your name. You have three minutes to speak on those two items dealing with CRA business. Okay, seeing nobody, we will move into the CRA project status report. Howard.
Howard Cunick, CRA Director. This is the monthly report for February. The marina activity. It's pretty consistent now, we have more monthly than annual or semi-annual, and we should be fixing the rest of the docks that created from Hurricane Irma. So again, the marina's doing quite well. And the pump-out vessel has had more activity than a year ago, because the weather cooperated this past month. Well, we do have some news on the Herald Court Center, the Dream Salon. The other person who was involved has taken over now. We have met them, along with their We have met them along with their new general contractor. They're going to try and use the subs that did the original work. And they're going to have to go in there and redo some of the work that was done that they didn't like. But the person who's taking over seems to have more of a hands-on approach now. So hopefully, hopefully, we can, they can apply for building permits. Our building official was there in the meeting as well. And they hope to have it completed by May. We'll see. But we have some hope there. And there's still work going on at the Fresh Market Agricultural Garden, East Virginia. So our staff continues to do some of the front entrance and on-street parking. So that continues, and that'll get up and running fairly soon. Our crew is at Duren Street. They've done some re-bricking after the underground work has been completed. The bricking should be completed maybe this week, weather permitting. And we can leave the site, get Duren Street opened up again, and that project will basically be complete. And the playground, if you've been out there, work progresses. Some of the equipment is in, and they're pouring, there's already been some concrete that's been poured. So most of the work should be done this month, but officially not open till probably March. And we do have some plans. We're reviewing for the restrooms by the playground. They finally came in. We're reviewing them. We'll be meeting with the engineer hopefully this week to go over some of those plans before we bid it out. And the library work, Charlotte County staff is starting to bring in some more fill because that site in the next few weeks should be done, hopefully, if they can bring in the fill quickly. And we'll be off the site. And construction, they're out to bid. So construction, they say March. We'll see, maybe April. But you're going to see construction soon.
I was asked yesterday by a local resident, when you feel that you'll be done compacting? Because they want to start building something, but they don't want to start building something with the ground, you know, shaking.
Few weeks.
About two weeks?
Few weeks.
Oh, a few weeks.
Depends on how quick Charlotte County can get the extra fill in there. Because we have to raise it. See, the mound is almost gone. So now they're bringing in more fill. We have to raise it to the level where the building is. So a few weeks if they can get the fill in in time.
Okay.
That's the goal anyways.
Okay.
Weather permitting. That's all I got. And next month, we'll probably have some pictures of the Harbor Walk by Fisherman's Village.
Nice. Lynn?
Two quick questions with regard to Lashley Marina. First, has any thought ever been given to putting a handrail down the transient dock, on the outside of the transient dock? I was there for a cruise about a month ago, and it's a very long, kind of narrow, long walk from one end to the other. And there's nothing to guide people who may be a little unstable, especially when you're walking adjacent to the waterfront. And you've got, it's an optical illusion if you look down. I'm just wondering if there would have ever been any thought given to putting any kind of a handrail down the side of it?
No. That's not, that's not.
I think it's something we should take a look at because for safety purposes, I think it's something that can give you a very weird, distorted perception of where the water is, where the walkway is, and that sort of thing. So I would just like to see if we could take a look at that and see if that's anywhere in an option.
Yeah, we can look at that. You're talking about the day docks.
Yes, yeah, the transient dock on the far west side of Marina.
Yeah, we can look at that.
And second of all, do we have any idea when the additional parking spaces are going to be created there?
Oh, we hope, we hope to start, our goal was to start construction, bid it out, and start construction after the event season. We're going to have to relook at our finance situation in the CRA. And we'll have more to report on that maybe next month. I could go into it in a little more detail, but because of the tax cut, our loan with the bank, the interest rate may get revised because of the tax cut, which means our debt service payments may go up. And if so, will we still be able to find the dollars within the CRA budget to pay for that? So that's what we have to look at. But we weren't even planning to do this work till after the event season.
Yeah, okay.
So we'll come back to you.
I just wondered if it had gotten plugged into the schedule at all yet.
Well, that was our goal.
Okay.
Any other questions for Howard?
No.
Okay, next item of business is approval of the minutes for January 3rd, 2018.
Move approval of minutes for the January 3rd meeting?
Second. Motion is second to approve the minutes. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, carried unanimously. Next, citizens' comments on CRA. Does anybody like to speak to the Community Redevelopment Agency area? Okay, seeing none, Commissioner comments, Nancy?
Nothing today, thank you.
Nothing?
Nothing.
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 Okay, we are adjourned. Have a good day. Yeah, thank you. Back to the peanut gallery goes.
We're not making big progress on this agenda.
Okay. We are back in session as the city council, and we do have one public hearing, GA 01-18.
Yes, this is the first reading of an ordinance, which I'll read by title only. An ordinance of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, amending Punta Gorda Code, Chapter 7, Building Regulations, Article 5, Flood Plane Management Code, Section 304, Manufactured Homes, and technical amendment to the Florida Building Code, R 322.2.1, elevation requirements to increase the minimum elevation for buildings and structures in flood hazard areas pursuant to the Florida Building Code, providing for conflict and severability and providing an effective date.
Good morning, Chief Building Official Randall Cole. This just brings our local ordinance in line with the new regulation of the Florida Building Code to effect January 1st. Limits any conflict as far as elevations. Any questions?
Any questions for the building official?
Is this going to also change for single-family residential?
Yes. This affects all structures.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, this is a public hearing. If you would like to speak on GA 01-18, now would be the time. Take this podium over here, state your name. You have three minutes. Would anybody like to speak on GA 01-18? Last call for GA 01-18.
Move to close public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to close the public hearing. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, carried unanimously.
Motion to approve GA 01-18.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to approve GA 01-18. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have no quasi-judicial public hearings, but we do have a resolution which does not require a public hearing. But if anybody would like to speak on this one item, now would be the time. I'll let you read the title, and then we'll see if anybody would like to speak.
Sure. This is a resolution which I'll read by title only. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, creating a donation review committee approving bylaws governing the function and procedures of the donation review committee, providing an effective date.
Anybody like to speak on the donation review committee? Anybody like to speak on this resolution? Okay, seeing none, this, we previously discussed all this. This is just the resolution, making it official. Any questions or comments?
I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to approve the resolution. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, carried unanimously. Okay, next we have the consent agenda, which I will read the items on the consent agenda, and then we'll find out if anyone wants to pull anything, and then we'll have our citizens' comments. So it would be under city clerk, approval of the minutes, city manager department, reemployment agreement addendum, a resolution to, an alternate to PRM. We have a couple of legal, three legal, two legal invoices, and the monthly litigation report. And then we have an event permit and two items for CHINEP. And then we have a MAC grant. Does anybody want to pull any of those items?
No.
No, no. Okay, would anybody like to speak on any of those items? Now would be the time. If you would like to speak on anything on this consent agenda, now would be the time. Take this podium over here, and you will have, state your name. You have three minutes. Anybody? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
Motion for approval.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, carried unanimously. Finally getting to what people want to hear, right?
You think?
Let's have a discussion. Okay, next we're moving into the regular agenda, which includes the budget items, which is the Long Range Financial Plan, the award of amendment to Wyler Engineering for 2A and 2B, the Gilchrist Park Activity Center Research Report, the Isle Jacques Club Pickleball Request, the event permit for Taste of Punta Gorda, consideration of the leash ordinance, and the update on the Burt Harris Act for Fisherman's Village. So it's been suggested to me that we move the Long Range Financial Plan presentation. I'm personally not in favor of that, but it's up to you. I mean, it just bothers me that we intentionally put these budget items at the beginning of our agendas so that people would be aware that they're here and that they could be here, and we could be more transparent for those who say that we're not. And now, you know, every time it's up there at the top, we're tending to move it down.
Well, budget items always are at the beginning of the agenda.
For a reason. We have a captive audience.
Yes.
That's my point. I mean, we can move it to later, or we can hear it now.
It doesn't matter to me either way.
Me either.
So let's hear it now.
By the way, as Kristin gets set up, on item 6B, which is the design for the, design for Phase 2 of the Harbor Walk, we just got the plans in for the restroom, which is right there in Phase 2. So we'd like to put this item off until the next council meeting so we have time to review the plans for the restroom and then come back to you with this design contract. There's no rush to do it today. We'd just like to get the restroom thing settled before we go and deal with this. Can we just put that off for two weeks?
That makes good sense.
Assuming that we do, what are we looking at for timing for putting them in place?
The restrooms?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, it depends on the final construction documents reviewed by Development Review Committee. If all that goes well, we'll put those out to bid very soon. But we want to review the design first.
I'm okay with that. Yes.
So we'll give you another update next council meeting.
Well, we're the staff that put this on here anyway, so I think.
We put it on.
Yeah.
But now that we have the restroom documents, something to really look at.
Okay.
We'd like to put it off.
As long as we're keeping things going.
So then you'll bring back this and the restroom.
There it goes, it's on that screen.
Design.
Well, we'll try and get this back, this will come back in two weeks.
Okay.
I don't know about how long it'll take us to go through a DRC for the restrooms.
Okay. All right, that sounds fine.
Okay.
So we're postponing 6B till the next council meeting.
Yes.
Okay.
It's cold in here.
Well, you just go, I can get that going.
Raise it.
Kristin Simeone from Finance. We're going to go over our long-range plan. In the budget agenda, it included the long, the whole document, and we have a PowerPoint in which we included the pro formas, but we're not going to go over them in detail as that's just there for reference in case there's any questions. So again, our long-range plan always starts with our fiscal forecast, and we provide a five-year outlook. And I did want to review the forecast assumptions, especially for the general fund or some of the funds where we're having some issues because that's the bulk of what we're going to talk about today. So for revenues in the general fund, we have our ad valorem, and the current assumption is that the milled rate is staying the same at 3.1969 with a 6% increase per year. So that's in all the out years. Other revenues were scheduled at 0% to 3% estimated increases. And the current pro forma also shows 672,000 use of reserves in fiscal year 19. The other capital outlay reserves through 2020 and 2022 were the other reserves that were used. Expenditures, the estimated increases used for personnel were 3% merit increases, pensions at 5%, health insurance 6%, and workers' comp at 10%. And again, we use that through the pro formas in all of our funds. The operating, we again estimate 3% on almost all the expenditures except for the liability insurance at 5%. And specific items in the general fund were election expenses, which were $35,000 per year, and comprehensive plan studies that are budgeted throughout the whole five-year plan based on what sections needed to be done. And capital outlay per our policy that we've been, had put in place just a few years ago for annual funding, the current plan, the current five-year outlook was $753,000 per year. And that just helps smooth the capital outlay instead of having big spikes when we have years with large purchases such as the fire apparatus. Transfers that are currently coming from the general fund, again, as planned is the drainage program, and that's one of the newer ones, the $500,000 per year. Paving program, $459,000 per year. Certain capital projects that are done every year, $155,000. And the Community Redevelopment Agency, TIF, has an estimate of a 4% increase per year. Again, that's just the pro forma that was also included in the thing. And this is just a graphical representation of what the pro forma looks like. This is just the analyzation of our reserves. And fiscal year 18, we were at the 7.5% minimum ending reserve. We would need to use another additional $108,000 to come up the extra 0.5% to the newer policy that we'll talk about is the 8%. That's been the council's objective, to continually raise that a half a percent every year. So using those numbers, the beginning fiscal year 19 reserves were at 3.1 million with the current pro forma showing use of 672,000. In the 8% minimum reserves, you still had 759,000 available for use. And then the capital outlay reserve for fiscal year 19 was, in this fiscal year 18, we were using up all our reserves, using that 756,000 less the current purchases that would be needed in fiscal year 19. At the end of 19, the ending capital outlay reserve would be 350,000. But by the end of the five-year pro forma, that capital outlay reserve is zero. Okay, so I'm not going to go through all of the forecast assumptions for everyone at this time, but they are here and available just for information. The CRA fund, we didn't really have anything to discuss in the issues, so I'm not going to go over that unless you need to. Utilities fund, I will go over just a few things. There are no rate increases currently in the pro forma. There's estimated 1% growth. And the SWIFTMUD grant funding is 50% for the full RO project. And so that is still an issue that is outstanding. Water impacts cover partial debt service of the RO plant, and wastewater impacts reimbursed for the Jones Loop project. for the Jones Loop project. And again, these are just the normal things that we currently have in our plan, so these parts are nothing new. Sanitation fund, we currently have a 60 cents per year rate increase for recycling, that's based on the recycling contract that's currently in place. We have financing of equipment in fiscal year 2022. And again, we use a five-year replacement plan outlook. Capital outlay reserve is depleted in 2020, so the equipment that is being scheduled to be replaced in 2022 is financed at this time.
So that's more Packers?
More Packers, yes.